All right, Jim, we're live.
You should be in okay shape now, Jim.
That's what they all say. In any events, all right, I think we're ready to go. Are we recording, Karen?
We'll record right now. I'm gonna stop the share for just a minute here. Okay. We're good to go.
All right, thank you. So I will now call this meeting to order. This is a public hearing being held by the Milis Select Board on today, March 1st, 2021. It's regarding a 61A property located on Village Street. Tonight, we are holding this public hearing so that we can receive from the public feedback about potential project here, potential of exercising the town's rights to purchase the land. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to, it's severalfold. First of all, is to let everyone know specifically what the opportunity is, describe the property, talk a little bit about what rights the town has under Chapter 61A, and then to talk a little bit about funding options if the town were determined to move forward with the purchase of the property. We will be hearing from the developer who has a current proposal so that we can all understand what the developer's option is for this property as part of our deliberation over what we should do as a town with respect to it. Following that, those brief presentations, what we will do is we will ask some members of several of our boards and committees who have already considered this opportunity, allow them to share with all of us their thought process and how they think we should proceed as a community. We will also allow comments from the public. What I would ask is that we await the presentations and then we'll open the forum to comments and questions from all residents. Again, this is an open public hearing. The goal of the select board is to get as much input from the community as possible so that we can take under consideration what the community, what our town's options are. I want to make it clear that tonight is not the night where the select board will make a decision. This is a night where we hear people's input so that we can weigh our decision and move forward from there. The board will be taking up this question again on its, at its March 8th meeting, as well as potentially its March 22nd meeting, to reach a final decision on what we recommend to the community. We're hoping for a full and fair discussion here in order to manage the, the public dialogue through this Zoom capability. We're going to ask, we have two options for people to ask questions. Again, we're going to get the questions after the presentations have been made. If you have a question that comes to mind while you are, while these presentations are going on, and you would like the board or someone to address answers to those questions at the second half of our meeting, you can send a question to Karen at the Town Hall via email. You see on the screen here her email address, it's kboray@milismass.gov. And if you would like to pose a question that way, then please do so, and we will address those questions during the open forum. If you would rather pose your questions directly through the open forum by comment, you will get the opportunity to be called upon and ask your questions. We're not going to be using the chat function because it creates a problem for us, given the fact that for much of this presentation, Karen's screen will be shared on, on the, with all of you, so the chat tends to intervene there, and we perhaps not want to do that. People sometimes chat among themselves. This is something that we're simply not going to utilize for this meeting. That doesn't mean, again, that we don't have, you don't have the ability to send an email if you'd like to do it that way, or to raise your hand during the open forum part of the meeting, and you'll be recognized to speak. During that period, and I will remind everyone of the ground rules when we reach that, that particular point, we will ask people to, who are called upon to identify themselves, to address the question to the board and to the, to the public, if you will, through their conversation. We're going to hold you to about no more than three minutes. No more than three minutes. And then we will ask, we'll have that question responded to, and then we will move to the next question. That's not to stifle conversation, but it's to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to speak. All of you who are on the, on the call right now, who are not speaking, I would urge you to put your, yourself on mute to avoid any unfortunate conversation, any unfortunate comments that you would prefer to leave outside of the public domain, and will help us to make sure that the conversations that we have are ones that are directed to the subject matter at hand. Again, I'll come back to that when it's time for us to move to, to the next part of our conversation. So as I said, what we're trying to do here tonight is lay out all the facts, make sure that people understand what the opportunity is here, and then for everyone to consider and comment upon the opportunity that is presented to us. So with that, those preliminaries in mind, I'm going to move to the next part of the presentation, which is the effort to identify for everyone who has not had the opportunity to take a look at these maps that are on the website, exactly where the property is, is located, and some of the characteristics of the property. So this particular map that we're sharing on the screen is a larger, larger scale. Larger scale map indicates where this property is located. This map is, gives you a sense of, you know, generally the, the land south of Route 109. So the Braun property is located off of Village Street. You can see the yellow on this map, that is the location of the property. Right below it is Village Street, so, and then up, up the way would be Pleasant and, and Acorn, so you get a sense of where this is located in, in the, in Milis. So that's the general location of the property. It is 23 acres, a little bit over 23 acres of open space right now, or open land, if you will. This property is, has been held under what we call Section, Chapter 61A. 61A allows the, the community to tax the property as an agricultural property at a lower tax rate. Because of that, it gives the opportunity for us, once the property is up for sale, to take a look at it to determine whether or not our, our community as a whole would like to purchase the property, to retain it for municipal use. So if you could move to the next, the next map, Karen, it gets a little bit closer view.
There we go.
Okay, this map is, is the same, is the property, the property is in yellow, again, as you see. And what it does is it identifies not only the property, but the abutters to the property. You can see around the property, there are some large parcels of land, the parcels to, to the south side, or toward, more toward the west side, if you will. Two of them are owned by the town of Milis. The cursor, Karen, if you could put the cursor right there, that, that one there, that, that particular parcel is owned by the town of Milis, is open space. And the one back here is also owned by the town of Milis. There's about 30 acres of land on those two parcels combined. You can see from the lower parcel that there is access to these parcels from the street, a very narrow access along Village Street, which does allow some folks to get into that, walk into that property and hike on it and whatnot. This property has been part of the, is owned by the town for quite a while. It has somewhat limited use, but it is open space, and it is available through the, the pathway, and the Conservation Commission has oversight for the property. The properties are, as you can see, the yellow property is directly abutting part of, of the, of this open space, so it is a fairly contiguous piece of land, which again, if it were added to the, this, these parcels as owned by the town, it would be somewhere north of 50 to 60 acres of space. The land right now is undeveloped. There are two parcels in white that you see, the sort of the south end here, along Village Street. Those are not part of the sale agreement. Those would be retained by current property owners, current homeowners. If you can go to the next slide, Karen.
Wetlands?
That's fine.
There you go.
In terms of the nature of the property, we took a look, for purposes of this conversation, at a couple of features, one of which is this one here. This, these, this map shows the wetlands, officially designated wetlands in the area. You can see that there's a fair amount of wetlands located on the, on the property owned by the town right there. There is also a fair amount of wetland in the property immediately between the town land right there and the Braun property. That is private property, so it's not engaged, it's not part of this consideration. But at this, based upon this map, there's no wetlands designated as part of the property at 377 Village Street. It's not encumbered by wetlands. If we could just show the next slide. There is a feature of this property dealing with its, you know, its usability, if you will. This is a floodplain map that shows the floodplain in the area. There is a small stream there, which perhaps in drier spells doesn't run very much, but it is a designated floodplain area. So that, that feature would have some impact on utilization of the property one way or the other. Certainly, building on flood, floodplain creates problems, challenges, if you will. But nevertheless, I thought it was appropriate for everyone in the community to see this particular feature of the property. So this is an overview of the property itself, where it is located, how it abuts town-owned land already. As I said earlier, the property is largely open space to the, really to sort of the west side. There's a fair amount of woods. To the east side is a large amount of open space, looked like it was at one point a farmer's field or farmland, if you, hasn't been used as a farm for a while, but nevertheless, it does, you know, it is a pretty open space right now. Karen, if you could just down, down the bottom, if you take a look at this again, look at the two parcels which abut Village Street, the one that is toward the east, which is off toward Acorn, you can see there are buildings on that parcel of the land. Those buildings are in fact on the land affected here. So one way or the other, if whoever ends up, you know, owning this property would probably have to deal with buildings, perhaps building removal or, or whatnot. So that's an overview of the property. Again, we can come back and you can ask more questions about the property itself. The Select Board, Planning Board, Conservation Commission members, Recreation Committee, and others, Zoning Board of Appeal members did take a site walk on the premises, graciously hosted by the owner. So we walked through a lot of this land to just make sure that we understood the scope of it, and it is quite a sizable parcel. And again, it abuts our conservation land that we already own, and so, you know, there are some certainly attractive features of this for the, for the use by the town. Okay. So I'd like to just move on and speak for a moment about sort of, okay, what brings us to this point? As I mentioned earlier, land like this, this open space, or what at one point was obviously agricultural land, the owner of the property has applied for it and is in fact operating under what we call a Chapter 61A assessment of the property for purposes of agricultural use. That assessment is significantly lower than it would be taxed at as land which was available for potential development. So as part of the, 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 off, the ability to use it, it's Chapter 61A tax benefit, if the property is then put up for sale, then the town has the opportunity to take a look at the property and determine whether or not the town would like to purchase the property to preserve open space or what have you. So we have this opportunity granted to us by statute. And frankly, at this stage of the game, it's the board's, Board of Selectmen's view or the Select Board's responsibility to do one of two things. Either exercise our option through this conversation and an action by town meeting, or to waive our rights, which would allow the, the potential purchase to, to go forward, and then assuming that the developer requires the land to develop the land. So we're here because we have this decision to make, and we think it's important, one that has to be shared with the whole community for us to make some kind of recommendation to the town, that us, meaning the Select Board. From a process point of view, we have received formal notice from the property owner and the developer that a purchase and sale agreement is in effect. So all the proper notice has been provided to the town. There was some earlier conversation back and forth where we did not receive all of the information, but now we have it. And on the advice of council, Town Council, who is on the meeting, on the call tonight, Mr. Tallerman, the formal notice is, is proper. So does now, the ball, so to speak, is in our court to make up our minds whether to work toward exercising the option to purchase or to waive our rights to purchase. And that, that's kind of where we are tonight. There is some urgency here, in the sense that we have a time limit on our ability to exercise our option. So we do need to, we believe that we need to make some kind of decision on this probably during March. And of course, if we decide to move forward, then we would have to seek appropriate funding from the town meeting to actually execute the purchase. So that, that's why it's important for us to, you know, fully discuss this, this proposition tonight. And then, as I said before, have the board consider the input here and other community input so that we can develop a recommendation during our meetings in March. The price of the property is the price, the price of the town is the price that is offered to the owner via the actual purchase and sale agreement. So that price calls for a, that PNS calls for a price of $1 million. So it's the town's opportunity to purchase the property and to purchase it by matching the price offered by the developer, and in which case, then if the town were to operate, which are exercise that option and appropriate the funds, then we would move forward with the purchase. Again, this is just an overview of what the process is, what choices are that we have in front of us tonight, and hopefully we would get, you know, significant feedback from everyone involved here so that we can make a reasonable and rational recommendation to the community. Again, at the end of the day, particularly the purchase decision, will rest with the community itself because the funding would have to come via appropriation at town meeting. With that in mind, what I've asked the town administrator to do next is very briefly go over with all of you, what are the funding options that we have? Again, we know what the opportunity is, we know what the price of the property would be, so it's important for us to understand tonight and over the next month or so, what would be our ability to raise the money necessary to purchase this property at $1 million? So, Mr. Gazinski, if you could just give us that quick overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to note that our finance director is on the call as well, so she may add some points to this, but there are essentially, in review of this, three main options for moving forward with a purchase. The first, and these all would be with appropriately, most likely a 20-year bond. The first is, is to borrow within the current tax levy cap. So that would be through the general fund without any request for a debt exclusion. So that would be the first option. The second option would be to, again, to borrow within the cap, but also to utilize some community preservation funds as part of the project. And certainly, if we were to do that, there would be some restrictions put on some portions of the property if we were to use some of those funds. The last major option would be to borrow using the process of a debt exclusion, which would require the approval in a ballot question at the upcoming town election. So those in a nutshell are the three major options. You know, there are some nuances in there, other things that might be done, but those have been identified as the three major approaches.
Okay, thank you. And I, I think that I would like to emphasize there as well is, depending on the approach that is taken, it does have a potential impact on the use of the property. So that we should not only consider the property itself, but if there are uses that we would like to put it to, whether they be conservation, open space, recreation, or municipal building, or general municipal purposes, some of that would, would lead us to certain decisions we would make in terms of funding sources. So with that said, that kind of lays out for everyone, hopefully, where the land is, what it abuts, the nature of the land, what potential opportunities there might be for the community if we decide to purchase the land. I think from purposes of full disclosure, so that all of us understand what the options are, if that land is sold to the developer. I have asked, the developer and his attorney have asked us to address the board and to address the community about, you know, what the potential utilization for that property would be if in fact the town decided to waive its right first refusal to allow the, the developer to purchase the property. So, Mr. Cannon, would you like to start? And I believe we agreed that we would allow you to share your screen so that you could go through with all the folks on the call, what the proposal is from the developer.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Edward Cannon, on behalf of Mr. Bob Fox, who is the principal behind the purchase of the, proposed purchase of the property, you were also joined tonight by Dan American from Legacy Engineering in Milis, who's also familiar with the property. So we did want to take a minute and just let the folks in town know what the intent is to develop the property and what the impact of that would be for the town. And so first, if I could, can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Is that big enough? Okay, terrific. So in black is the subject property, and as was pointed out earlier, just to the west, 33 acres of town-owned open space under the control of Conservation Commission. That's, that does have access off of Village Street. I believe there may also be some paths off of Taiconroga. What Mr. Fox would like to do is to construct senior residential living here. 46 units are proposed, and part of that would entail leaving over half of the property as open space, which eventually would go to the town at no cost to the town. So this area here is the proposed 12 acres that would remain as open space. And the sort of crosstash area here is where the units would be located. Mr. Fox is proposing that, similar to what was done at Glen Ellyn, to construct some public parking, and then also to construct walking trails, not only on this area here that would be open space as part of this, but is open to speaking to the Conservation Commission, who owned, who, or does own, controls all of this, open space area, possibly constructing trails to make this more accessible for, for folks. I believe there may be a few spaces here, but it's right off of Village Street. The access isn't the greatest, and the capacity is not too great as well. So we think this might be a safer and easier option for people to access this.
Please mute yourself if you're joining the meeting.
If I, let's see. Let me just pull up another slide if I may. So. So the 23 and a half acres in question is bordered by the 33 acres of town-owned conservation land. The proposed development meets zoning requirements, obviously would have to go through the permitting process and, and approval for those proposed spaces, but we're fairly confident that that can be achieved. And that, at the end, there's an open space component that don't all, that's 12 acres that the town would acquire of the 23 acres at no cost to the town. Yes, it would be preserved as open space for sort of passive recreation, that is, you know, if the town were to buy the property, we certainly understand that the town would have the flexibility of sort of any public use if the town were to do that. Again, as I said, the builder will build trails, have a public parking area for visitors, and also make a financial grant to the Preservation Committee. With the senior residential community development, the town will enjoy a total amount of open space of 45 acres if the 12 acres of open space proposed were tacked on to the 33 that's already controlled by the Conservation Commission. And I have a slide that will sort of enhance this a little bit, but the town will realize after it's fully built out, approximately $471,000 of annual tax revenue, or approximately $4.5 billion tax revenue over a 10-year period. And there'd be no impact on schools or, or minor impact because it would be a senior residential community, and there'd be no impact on other town services such as plowing, maintenance, trash removal, maintenance of the public parking area, maintenance of the public trails within the 12 acres on site, because all of these amenities will be maintained, and the maintenance will be paid for by the condominium associations, again, at no cost to the town. And so would the town, we hope the town in deliberation, in its deliberations will think about is taking this piece of property off of the tax, tax rolls permanently, with Milis presently has the 35th highest tax rate in Commonwealth, of 351 cities and towns. And that's a significant tax impact, which if I can, on my last slide, also just maybe illustrate for folks. So this is projected over a 10-year span. It would be an average sale price per unit of $540,000 at the current tax rate of $19.16 per thousand. It's an estimated revenue of $10,346 per year, per unit. Assuming a half buildout in year one of 2022 would be half that revenue, and then in succeeding years, a projected full buildout. Keeping the tax rate steady just for illustrative purposes, obviously if the tax rate increases, that will affect the numbers. If the sale prices increase or decrease, that'll impact the numbers. But based on these numbers, to draw the illustration for folks that have tuned in, the 10-year projected revenue to the town would be $4.477 million. This is assumed assessment based on projected sale prices in the discussion that Mr. Fox and the town assess. And again, it's based on the current tax rate for illustrative purposes. Dan or Bob, I don't know if you have anything further to add, but I hope that gives folks sort of a picture of what the possibility is and what Mr. Fox's vision is to develop the site and the benefits to the town associated with it.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. American, do you have something you'd like to add?
Just a quick note, I would point out, you, you put up a couple of maps earlier in the presentation, and there is a wetland through the center of the property, that area where you showed as being in a floodplain area, there is a wetland there as well. There's a stream that basically cuts right down through the middle of the property, and there's a wetland that flags that stream on both sides. We have had a botanist flag it, so if you were out there, you might have seen those flags. We have not located them yet or put them on a plan, but I just wanted you to kind of be aware of that.
That is in this area here, is that right, Dan?
Correct. And then as you move towards the north, it kind of fans out in that wooded area. And then as you move towards the north, it kind of fans out in that wooded area and becomes a little more pronounced.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay. So at this point, I think what we've tried to do is lay out for folks the town's opportunity, the town's rights, and also the alternative, which, as I said, would be the town waiving its right, which would then put the developer in a position to move forward. You know, it's a private transaction, and it's up to him. So that's kind of our attempt here now. Again, if you have questions that you would like to pose, and you can hold them until we get to the question session, or if you'd like to email them into Karen at, Karen, your email address again?
It's just kberay@millisma.gov. I do have just a few questions already, Jim, so you tell me.
Okay, so we encourage you to raise the questions, and again, not to preclude comment. After we have listened to a few more comments from board members and whatnot, we will move to that session of the presentation. Tonight, again, we are looking for guidance, community input on exercise or wait. We're not asking for folks to get involved in the design of the project. If that goes forward, there'll be, if that decides, that goes forward, there'll be plenty of opportunity for the community to weigh in through the normal process on the potential development. So I'm not trying to preclude questions you might have for the developer if they're interested in answering them, but I do want to indicate that this is not really about fully understanding the full implications of that particular development. But I'm very grateful to Mr. Cannon, Mr. American, Mr. Fox for sharing with us their plan so that we can get a good sense of what the options might be. Now, that being said, as I mentioned earlier, we did have the opportunity on the 7th of January, a number of members of the select board, as well as other committees, doing a walkthrough, pretty extensive actually, of the property. So, and several of our boards have gone back and had deliberation over this, after this visit, so I'd like to offer the opportunity for them to weigh in, one or more of them, and I perhaps start with the planning board, which of course, as the planning board is the group that is responsible for zoning, development, those kinds of things in the community. So I appreciate their effort to visit the site and also to offer their opinions tonight. So, Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually, to be upfront, did not actually visit the site. I was unable to get there that day, but I'm familiar with the property. And one of the things that Millis has is lots of open space property with lots of water on it. As Mr. Cannon described, there was a piece of property adjacent to this, which has lots of unsuitable areas for building. And we have other parcels around the town that, although they look really nice, are really not useful for anything other than open space. One thing the town does need is pieces of property that we could use for municipal use, housing, possible school down the road, because one thing that we're not making in Millis is more property. And to have a piece of property like this come up is not very, doesn't happen very often, and it would be something that the town should look at long and hard to be able to end up with buildable property. Buildable meaning for either, like I said, the things that I described, or we could even use it as open space for now, and we could use it as an investment. Because nationally, the property values go up 3.5% to 3.8% per year, and lots in Millis average around $200,000 to $270,000 per buildable lot, which there would be, there would be a certain number of them on this property. Obviously, the middle section being wet would be a bit of an issue, but the town could look at it also as an opportunity to buy a piece of property to be able to put in our back pocket and use for later on. So that would be the points that we would like to bring forward as the planning board.
Thank you very much. Again, if members of the planning board want to weigh in during the open session, that's fine, too. We have someone from Community Preservation Committee, which is a group that does have part of its charter, looking at recreation and open space. Mr. Moltinsky?
I can see you. There you go. Here we go, sorry. New computer. So the purview of the CPC committee is to review articles that are brought to our attention. We do not go out and seek them. So if a party does bring something to us, we do deliberate over a period of meetings. But we have done several land, well, one land purchase of the Dewey property at the corner of Exchange and Orchard Street, and that has been paid off. That was 7.6 acres for $300,000, and that was roughly around 10 years ago, and that has been paid off. The Cassidy property, which was not part of the CPA, was purchased in 1997, 98, and that was roughly around 50 acres for around $800,000. So we've only done really one land purchase so far, and we did bond that project, and I believe it was a, I want to say a five-year bond with interest. So if the project is brought to our committee, which we actually, we were meeting this Thursday, we would entertain any prospective project from the select board, or from Conservation, or whatever entity would like to do a proposal to us.
Thank you, Mr. Moltinsky. And certainly, as we move forward, assuming the board would like to move forward, the select board, we'd be bringing this potential project to the committee for consideration. We have someone from the Conservation Commission?
Hello, everyone. I'm Jim Wetter. Can you hear me? I'm off beautifully.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I am here representing the Conservation Commission, and we support the purchase of the property for the reasons stated by Mr. Nichols and also Mr. Moltinsky. And I actually, I was not, I was unable to make the site visit, but a number of the members of the Conservation Commission did attend, and we just, we've been discussing this at length in our, in our meeting, multiple meetings. There is wetlands through the middle, a stream, but there's a lot of useful areas that could be built out for recreational use. Also, the property at Butts, another piece of property that is owned by the Conservation Commission and the town. It has some very nice hiking trails that could be accessed directly from this property. So I really think it's something that would be important to preserve as open space and, you know, basically for the future of the town in Millis. And I would actually ask other members of the Conservation Commission to weigh in if they have any comments beyond what I just stated.
Certainly, is there someone, others would like to speak from the Conservation Commission?
This is Carol Hayes from the Conservation Commission.
Carol, yes, go ahead.
Yes, we were looking at this property and thinking it'd be great for, like, space for recreation, say, like a playing field for kids, because there's not a whole lot of, like, town fields, like soccer fields or other recreational areas for Millis students. And we could also potentially rent it out to other towns to use these fields for, for a little bit of income from them, but just gives more open space and is a great opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is John Stedman from the Conservation Commission.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stedman.
I believe under 61A, if the town purchases it, it becomes a conservation easement for open space, public recreation, which means it could not be later sold as speculative property. I may be wrong on that, but I believe that's the case.
Mr. Calloman from council, could you respond to that, please? I saw you ready to go there, Jay, so I thought I'd just pose it to you.
Yeah, it's a bit of a misnomer. Certainly, if we purchased it with CPA, and by law, it has to be restricted for open space or recreational purposes. If it's not purchased with CPA money, it's just purchased with municipal money, they could be used for any municipal purpose that may be designated. Town meeting could choose to limit it to conservation, but they don't have to.
Okay. So some of this would depend on the way we bought it if we decided to do that?
Correct, and the way that it's presented to town meetings.
Correct. Okay. Anything else from the Conservation Commission, or the planning board for that matter, if another member of the planning board would like to weigh in?
Yes, Scott McPhie, a member of the Conservation Commission.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks for welcoming my comments. I agree with most of what the other folks said for usage. Sports fields, nature trails, actually could be good for community gardens, and some regenerative farming, maybe a combination of orchards and other types of farming, and maybe even make it a, you know, have a interpretive nature center, something like that. I don't know if there'd be a building, but basically to educate the public about soil conservation, land use, interpreting the forest. Also, I think that was it. So, I mean, we're, there's some other pieces of property in town across from, like, Oak Row Farm and so forth. They are large open spaces, and I think we were also talking about, gee, we have all these fields in these spaces, we should probably be trying to encourage some more active use by the town. A lot of places folks don't know about, but this particular property, even though that the wetland area goes to the middle of it, a lot of it is, is more upland and dry, and it's a combination of forests and fields, which is a very interesting natural habitat for people to learn about. So I'd recommend that the town consider its purchase.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Nicole Riley from the planning board. Just to follow up on what Chairman Nichols said from the planning board, in our discussion, the planning board was of the opinion that what we do feel that it would be a very valuable piece of property for the town to acquire. However, we, our board felt that it would be beneficial if we were to acquire it without having limitations on the property, simply because we do have so many pieces of town-owned property that do have open space limitations. We are facing, we do have a lot of development coming into the town in the near future. We have just built a new elementary school. We will be needing a new high school and a new middle school. We are probably going to see increases. And so that would be an option to have, it would be nice to be able to have some cleared property that we could use for recreational purposes if we chose to, but also have that, as Mr. Nichols said, in our back pocket if, down the road, we need a new, we need to locate a new school. When looking at the elementary school, I believe one of the first conversations they had was acquiring other property, and that was a big deterrent. So the planning board had just discussed that we would like to see the town acquire the property, but we would, we would be of the opinion that it be, on in a way, that it not be, the usage not be limited to just open space.
Okay, thank you. I would like to, the opportunity, because the Recreation Committee also had an interest in the Rec Department, is there someone from the committee or the Rec Director to speak about the point of view of the Recreation Committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Tim Davis, Recreation Chair for the committee. I think our stance on this is pretty, I think, you probably assume, the Recreation Department's on this. I think the immediate impact can be seen as a passive parcel, connecting to the abutting properties for passive recreation. But as Ms. Hayes mentioned, the town, while we have substantial fields in the heart of our town, we are still in desperate need of furthering the physical fields and playing areas for both, you know, for the residents and for the schools that we have in town. So, you know, recreation as a whole is in need of some additional property to develop more playing fields, more playing space for our residents to recreate. So we are in favor of this with that potential. Like I said, we do see, I think, an immediate impact from the passive aspect of it with the trails and connecting the existing parcels, but it could open, again, the opportunity for further development and furthering our department, both programmatically, but also for the town and the kids in town to have additional playing field.
I concur with Tim. Thank you.
Jim, you're muted. There we go.
I agree with Tim. Thank you.
Typical, yeah, for, I don't know whether I'm coming or going, but here we are. We also had, joined us members of the ZBA. Is there someone from the ZBA who'd like to weigh in on this conversation right at this point? That's the Zoning Board of Appeal for those who don't like acronyms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter Kofopoulos, Chairman of the ZBA. My thoughts are is that the developer is offering a, sort of a good solution in terms of impact on town services for a over-55 development, with his offer of providing 12 acres of land to the town on the northern side of the property, and then improving the town land on Ticonderoga, off Ticonderoga. It seems like it's a win-win situation for the town to allow the developer to proceed. It is a difficult lot. I mean, it looks good on paper, but there are issues with water, and it appears from his layout that he may have a good solution for it in terms of development. The only question that I would have as part of the ZBA is that the Braun Residential property that was subdivided off that lot is a non-conforming lot in terms of the placement of the dwelling, and I would ask the town to pursue with the developer to reconfigure that lot to make it compliant. But aside from that, I, my opinion is that we should allow the market to drive the land, and again, the developer sounds like he has a good handle on proceeding with it.
Very good. Thank you. So at this point, I would like to give the opportunity to the public at large, doesn't mean any member of a committee might not want to ask an additional question, have a comment. Again, this is intent to gather information, and the select board members are interested in hearing from folks. I think we'll start. Karen, do you have a, an email or two you might share with us so we can at least start the conversation using the email?
I do.
And those of you who have questions, if you would like to think them through and raise your hand on the Zoom, you can do that. Again, we'll recognize you, ask you to speak for no more than three minutes, and then we'll try to respond to your questions. Karen?
Mr. McCaffrey, Mr. Chair. So the first one comes from Loring Barnes, who had several questions. questions. First is, could you please explain Melissa's CPA funding program to include the current balance in the account and projects that are being teed up for funding? For example, the Lansing Millis Building and the estimated cost for those projects.
So the question relates to other uses of CPA funds. I don't know, Mr. Moltinsky, if you have some things you'd like to address there?
Currently, we have no other projects, Mr. Chairman, that have any significant value for costs right now. There is projected that there's been discussion about the Lansing Memorial Building for restoration, but we have no other large projects on the books right now. So waiting for our projects to come in.
Could I just ask a sort of a little bit of a follow-up, which is there are designated components of the CPA?
Yes, there are.
So is open space account, could it or could it not be used for projects such as restoration of the Lansing Millis Building?
Well, the restoration of the Lansing Memorial Building would come out of historical funding.
Right.
So open space or recreation would be out of that fund for potential for the property.
So there are some uses that, you know, may appear to be conflicting, but may not be. On the other hand, I think, you know, the question is about priorities, which is always what this is about. As everyone knows, there are priorities that we're trying to reach, and this is one of the questions, and is the question that clearly brings out, there are competing interests as well. Karen?
Let's see, I might paraphrase a couple of these to Loring, hopefully you are not offended. Let's see, Millis can't maintain current land and relies on some aging volunteers from everything from the library to town hall garden beds, the Oak Grove Farm. How would we take more land on and how would we address maintenance costs?
Well, I think I can address that. That clearly is an issue. It was an issue that was informally discussed during our walkthrough, in terms of how you would take this property and then develop it, and I mean for recreation use. It's clear that the property has some buildings and some old equipment that is on the property that the owner would have to address, one way or the other. We have acquired other parcels in the past, particularly something like the Bederber property, for those of you who've been here for a while and, you know, essentially did nothing to maintain it and watched the building fall down. So this speaks to a broader issue of, frankly, budgetary priorities that this community, even for the existing open space, is quite, quite true that we're underinvesting in the maintenance of those properties, and this would certainly be additional property. But there's no readily available funding at this point for that. It doesn't mean that we couldn't somehow structure this deal to leave us some money to do it, but, okay, let's move to a question I have, what I believe is a raised hand, which even I think I can figure out, from Mr. Cantoregui. Did I get that right?
You did, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
I just had a couple of thoughts. Folks brought up about, you know, ball fields, and I was on the ball field study before, and maybe folks at home don't realize that, you know, across from Oak Grove, that whole field over there, that is not conservation land. On the right-hand side is municipal property, and that area was addressed to be, put sports fields in. There's also a lot of open space in town that we could put sports fields in. Obviously, Oak Grove Farm, they've looked at it in the past, the town actually got some appropriations at one time maybe to do that work. I don't know whatever happened with that. Regarding CPA funding, yes, it can be used for open space, you know, as was touched on before, can restore buildings, but you know, the other thing I think is overlooked is town, that the CPA funding can also be used for creating affordable housing, and I think that's something we need to look at. If we went all CPA on this project, a million dollars is a lot of money, and it would pretty much earmark a lot of the CPA funding for quite some time, so it's just basically putting everything in one thing. And then overall, you know, like everybody else, people complain about taxes, but if someone brought up, we're like in a top 10% state, so the bottom line for me, I'm looking at a million bucks. You know, for a million bucks, I think there's other priorities in town right now. If you want to stay on the sports field thing, you know, we could put a turf field in. You know, that's a million bucks of whack, and we got places to do that. The other thing is, which I think is the most important thing in this town right now, is a senior center. And could that be to use CPA funding for that? Could they use a debt service override? Maybe the Lansing building be upgraded or something like that? Maybe reconfiguration of the town hall? But a million dollars is a lot of money. And finally, as I was in the Planning Board, you know, a lot of these projects come down to is not in my backyard, but at the end of the day, the Planning Board and the residents of town embrace these 55 pluses that don't impact our schools, and the good thing about that is brings a lot, a lot of tax revenue to the town. The other thing that people forget is it brings a lot of people to town. We're always talking about economic development, economic growth, and if we want to get some more restaurants downtown, we want to get some more small businesses going to make our overall community vibrant, we need people that come and live and support this community, not just drive through on 109 and stop at a gas station. So those are my basic thoughts, and thank you for your three minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have another one raising their hand?
I was gonna say I have another question on email.
Well, I was gonna, yeah, there's no other immediate question, let's get an email question.
I don't see anyone else raising their hand right now, and I apologize if I'm missing you. So the next question came from Nancy Sitter. She was just commenting that the two properties that were shown that are adjacent, that are town properties, that she was unaware that those were actually town properties, and where would be a good place for people to take a look at a map where they could see all of the town-owned properties?
I'll leave that to the town administrator.
Mr. Chairman, that is an excellent question. I know that the town assessor does have maps that show that, and I will definitely chat with her about maybe putting something together that we could get up on the town's website. That's a good idea, we can certainly do that.
So we will work to get a inventory of these pieces of land. I know that, I believe that the, yeah, that the Conservation Commission is already working on this. We have Mr. Stedman, he's raising his hand here, maybe you could speak to that?
The best place right now to find that information is in the Open Space Recreational Plan that was put together by the town, I believe, in 2019 and maybe before that, but that's available on the web. You can link to it through the Millis website, and that's, that's a very good starting place. There are several parcels that are not included in that, but that, that's got the bulk of them.
Okay, great, but I, that's terrific news, but maybe we're gonna have sort of a organizing entry into the website on the selectmen's, on the front page as a follow-up?
Certainly.
So people can find the sources for this information?
Sure, we can certainly put a link to that on the homepage.
The next question?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, I mean, sorry.
Sorry, that's, comes from Diane McBride, who has asked if these, if the senior project housing is built, wouldn't there be a need for sewer and water, and how would that affect the town? Not sure who.
Mr. Gzinski, maybe you could have a little bit of conversation. I mean, I haven't quite reached that point because there's no specific proposal yet, but those are certainly excellent questions based upon, particularly, not so much the water, but more the sewer constraints that we have right now.
I believe, I believe that water does go in front of that property, there's a water line, but I would, as far as the proposed project goes, I would probably defer that to the developer as to how they plan to deal with that, and certainly, it would be a town issue if, if the town purchased the property and we were looking to put, say, a municipal building of some sort on the property, we would have to address that in some form or other.
So, Mr. Merrick, and you seem to have unmuted, maybe you have some wisdom to share here?
There is water in Village Street. There's no sewer in this location on Village Street, so it would have to be extended to the sites, either up Village or over land if, if Eastmans could be acquired from other properties that are connected to sewer and more.
So it's, it would have to be addressed by the development if they were to go forward, and it may be not as simple a solution, but that doesn't mean that developers don't come up with a solution. It does reflect on our, which is not unique to this proposed project, you know, our ongoing conversations about sewer capacity, so. Other questions?
This one comes from Ms. Diane Germain, and who is asking if any of the units are going to be low income in the proposed development? Or just all senior?
I don't know, do you have, Mr. Cannon?
Chair, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, this is a market rate development.
Okay.
And the second question from Diane was, what is the approximate annual cost impact to a median homeowner in Millis if the town is to vote to purchase the land and finance through a debt exclusion?
Mr. Gzinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of factors that go into that. We did some, we did some rough estimated math, because again, as I said, you'd have to assume certain factors, as in the actual interest rate, the length of the bond, but roughly speaking, we would anticipate on the average taxpayer would be about $30 per year for 20 years.
Again, that, I want to emphasize that that would be the case in the event, there would be an extra $30 in the case of the actual use of a debt exclusion override to purchase the property.
That's correct.
Cost is the cost, right, the cost is the cost, but whether or not we would have the opportunity either through CPA funds or under the debt cap we already have, it would be the same cost, but it would not be, lead to a tax increase for this particular transaction. If we did a debt exclusion override, then it would be a tax, a temporary tax increase, temporary, for 20 or 30 years to fund the property. Again, if we're, if we decide to move forward, the board is going to have to come up with a recommendation as to how the project would be funded, and in the event of a funding through a debt exclusion override, would have to be approved by the town meeting as well as on a ballot. If it's the other methods we've discussed, it would require town meeting approval, and if any debt is incurred, it would require town meeting, two-thirds vote at town meeting to authorize the expenditure. We have other questions, Karen?
Okay, yes, I guess that falls, we'll follow it up with this, how much money can be raised from the town preservation funds for this?
I think that that, we'll have more information on that as we actually present something to the CPC, if that's what we, that's the way we seek to go. Mr. Moltinsky, you have some thoughts you'd like to bring up at this point?
Yes, we always encourage alternative funding sources, so if the town gave money out of another coffer, and then the CPC, the town could vote on the second half, although that's a kind of a catch-22, because if the town doesn't, the town people don't agree to spend the money, to appropriate the money at town meeting, then it could fall through. So, I mean, the whole project could get funded through the CPC through a bonding of probably 20 years.
Okay, then I have Tim Davis, Mr. Chair, from the Recreation Department, who has asked, would the developer be open to alternative recreation development besides trails? For example, open fields for recreation usage such as soccer or alternative programming?
So this is a question for the developer or council or, not necessarily, what's the, what's your take on this at this point?
At this stage, certainly we consider any of those sort of uses of the area that would be left as open space and really under the control of the town, so by all means, we would be interested in exploring those options.
Okay, then we have one, what is the projected tax base from Glen Ellen? What percentage of the property, the development is complete? And how many proposed dwellings are projected in the near future? I don't know if anyone has that information.
I think that, it's a very good question. The latest report that I can share from the developer is that approximately 100 units have been sold and are, and closed. There are another 50 units that are under contract, that was about a month ago, and the developer was expressing some optimism about the spring selling season. So exactly how much that generates depends upon the valuations. I would, I would share with the folks that when this developer, the Toll Brothers, was actively involved in finalizing its approach, which now is five or six years ago, the analysis they brought to the town was that, you know, approximately $2.5 million net of whatever we would spend on services, would, that would be the amount of money generated from the project in terms of, if you want to call it pure profit, so to speak, when the project is fully built out. Based upon what's happening so far, I think that's a substantial underestimate of what the revenue will actually be. Again, this is real estate revenue based upon, you know, about 350 dwellings, or 320 is the visit rate number. But on the other hand, it's not just Glen Ellen, because Mr. Fox is also developing an over 55 extension of the Acorn, in Acorn Place, so there's another 40 or so units there. There's a fair amount of revenue that's going to be generated from these particular resources. It takes a little while for it to stream in, but I think that this community can take some comfort from the fact that when the Planning Board and other boards develop its senior residential housing zoning and work with the developer, these projects will be of significant value to the community, and as was indicated earlier by someone, it's not only the money, but it's the people who are joining us in our town, who will be part of our team, so to speak, to move forward with the community. So it's a long-winded answer, and I don't want to, please don't write all those numbers down as put money in the bank, but there's substantial amounts that will be realized through the taxes on residents at the Regency of Glen Ellen, as well as additional fees generated for water and sewer, because this development is also connected to town water and town sewer. Other questions? Anybody else who has a live question that they'd like to ask? I don't want to.
Take a quick look here, make sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay, I don't see any, so I will say the next one comes from Stan Jablonsky at 30 Glen Ellen Boulevard up at Toll Brothers. He had a few questions, I would think the most prevalent is why not, why would the town not improve current recreational facilities with the money instead of purchasing something new?
Well, that's certainly an option. I think that that's an issue that, you know, can be discussed and addressed. It's less likely to generate a bonding, however, for, unless there's something that's actually built. So there is some difference in the way it might get funded or financed, but it's certainly legitimate consideration for us to think about.
And then I have, let's see, does anyone have the percentage of 55-plus residents in Millis currently?
I think the answer to that is probably no. We have a pretty good handle on those over 65, which last I saw was close to 3,000 out of 8,000, so the 55 group will be even larger. So, the 55 group will be even larger, you know, make it larger than that. It's certainly a large group, even just the general aging of the population would indicate that we would have well over 3,000 of over 65 during the next eight to 10 years, and the number of folks in the over 55 category, of course, is going to grow significantly as well. So, it's a substantial portion of the total population. And, you know, with these large senior housing, senior residential projects, percentage growth is going to be much higher for that group than it would be for those under 55.
Okay, the next one is, if the land is purchased by the developer, is the developer legally required to follow the plan, including providing 12 acres for recreation, or could that change?
That's a question that we can ask them to address. I would just start by saying, this developer was very gracious and helpful in showing his general plan to us at this point. So, I'm not sure that they're going to commit to anything, but a little bit from the attorney, and maybe if the planning board would like to weigh in too as to what would be required from the planning board if this project were to continue or to move forward, we can have it. Again, I, let's give as much as we can, this is not really a hearing on what this project will be or what special permits would have to be issued, but I do think it's a good question to get some general, some general observation, if you will. Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The bylaw itself, you know, requires a certain amount of open space, and based on Dan's design, we take that to be a pretty good estimate as to what the open space would entail with this particular project. It is at a preliminary stage, but we're fairly confident, because, in addition, Mr. Fox, as you know, is experienced in building in Milis senior residential community, so he has a pretty good idea on how this works.
Just to, as a clarification too, from my perspective, is the design is responsive to zoning bylaws that are already in effect. So, that's correct, right?
That's correct. That's how Dan has come up with this, is with guidance from the senior residential community bylaw. Already in place.
So, it's a residential section, but also the application here would be the senior residential zoning bylaw. Mr. Merrick, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
No, just that, you know, your bylaws, as they are drafted and on the books, require, as Mr. Cannon indicated, certain buffers to adjacent properties and a certain minimum percentage of open space. And based on the layout of the site with the stream through the middle, does look to me like we're going to end up exceeding fairly significantly the minimum requirements for open space under the bylaw, and that 50% number is, is I think going to be pretty close to what we're going to end up with for open space as part of a project like this.
Rich Nichols?
Yeah, Richard Nichols from the planning board. So, to follow up on Mr. Cannon and Mr. Merrick's comments, you know, they have to follow the bylaw, and as long as that happens, which it turns like it would be, that would be, you know, what they would have to do in order to develop the property.
Very good. We have a question, we have a hand raised, Mr. McKay?
Mr. McKay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, to answer this question as a Milis resident, not as the DPD Director, what would be the cost that the town will lose for taking this land out of 61A? Is it there a buyback for five years that the developer would have to pay?
Jimmy, you just muted yourself, sir.
So far, the answer is yes, there's a buyback provision. Hey, do you have a, I'm not sure what the number would be, but there is some provision in this. If the developer were to purchase the land, then 61A would require some, I'll call it a buyback. Is that right?
Five years.
So, five years worth of taxes, that's a point well taken. Not the taxes, but the difference between what it would have been taxed at versus what it is would be the responsibility of the developer to remit to the town. So, taking it out of the 61A agricultural situation would require some payback for the last five years, which is a similar thing that happened in other open space purchases. I mean, we can get the number and then figure out exactly what it would be, I don't have it off the top of my head. But that's a good point, that does, that is part of the process. If the land is acquired, there would be some tax money remitted to the community to essentially buy out of the 61A tax advantage.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Have you got anything emailed in?
Yes, this was emailed in from Autumn Richards, and I would say it's a zoning question. She wants to know if the developer could include any businesses in their plans similar to the 55-plus community that is in Norfolk currently? And would there be any plans on the town side to put businesses on this property?
Well, let me speak to the town's intent. The town's intent at this point in time is to determine whether to purchase the land, and the step as to how we might develop the land is, has not been considered. Most of the conversation at this stage of the game, however, has been purchase for purposes of open space, potentially recreation, rather than onsite development. But as was pointed out earlier, if the community decided to purchase the property as a municipal, for municipal purposes, we would control it, and we would have the opportunity to deal with that. Now, we do have zoning issues certainly in that particular area of town. So, I don't know if, off the top of your head, either Mr. Nichols or Ms. Riley, you have any insight as to what zone is over there?
I'm not quite sure in that area. I think, I would almost like to say it was agricultural, but I'd have to look at the map.
It's an RS residential suburban.
Okay, thank you.
Which means it's a residential community, residential area, so unlikely that businesses would be located there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Nicole Riley, please.
Ms. Riley?
We do, we, the current bylaws did not provide for that for businesses in there for over 55 development. Assisted living facility developments do allow for businesses within the property, however, they're restricted as businesses only to be utilized by the residents. But we don't have anything similar to that in the over 55 resident developments. So, considering that it is a residential property, and it's coming in as a over 55 development as opposed to assisted living, I don't think there would be the ability, the developer would have the ability to put any sort of businesses in there. Mr. Cannon obviously could, could probably, or Mr. Tallam, could speak to that better, but I do know that those businesses are only allowed with assisted living.
Okay, other questions, Karen?
I have one more, which is, what is the timeline for this, which I believe you reviewed briefly at the beginning, but just kind of looking at what is the process again at this point, moving forward?
Okay, let me just, I'll comment on that. The timeline really would be to meet the deadlines that the Chapter 61A sets upon us now that we've received the official notice of sale, would put us in a situation where during March, and most likely by March 22nd, which is the Suckman's second meeting, Suckman's second meeting, select board would be well-served by developing our recommendation and then putting together a warrant article, because one way or another, it's got to go to the warrant, because it has to be appropriated by town meeting. So, that would have to occur really within the next three weeks. If in fact we'd make a proposal to move forward, if it requires a debt exclusion override, we would have to have that, well, we would have that put together in time for presentation on the ballot for the March 10th election, I'm sorry, May 10th. So, we're talking about over the next two and a half months, because you're looking at a town meeting on the 3rd and a town election on the 10th. If we decide to make a proposal that requires a borrowing but not use of a debt exclusion override, then the town meeting would have to be presented with that by its meeting the first week in May. So, it is a matter of importance for us to move forward with it. And this meeting, of course, is an important component of that, so that we get, continue to encourage community input on this, on this question. Hopefully, that's clear enough. Time is of the essence here. So, are there other questions, or?
I don't have any others through the email.
Anybody raise their hand?
I don't see anyone with a hand raised. Speak up if we're missing you.
Okay, well, I would provide this opportunity to my colleagues on the board, if they would like to make some observations or comments on what we've heard tonight, what we would like to see, you know, in a way of additional information, I would offer the opportunity for them to have the, you know, address the group. Again, the decision here is not the, we're not looking to decide tonight, we're looking to gather the data and gather the information, and it's certainly provided a lot of a different, a different insight and input. So, with that said, Mr. Germaine, would you like to offer some observations, comments?
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I could just interject for one minute, I noticed people are trying to use the chat, we can't use the chat tonight, so if you could send, you an email if you have a question that you wanted addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. As we indicated earlier, we're asking for, the chat is not compatible from our point of view to this kind of a forum. So, if you could email it to Karen, give them your email again, Karen?
It's kboaret, so K-B-O-U-R-E-T at milisma.gov, or you certainly can raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Germaine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I find it very interesting, everything that's been presented this evening and is discussed. I think this was very valuable and helping to formulate views. Quite honestly, I've been trying to remain somewhat open on it, and this is quite enlightening. However, it's going to take me a little time personally to digest what I've heard here tonight, listening to various points of view that have been proposed, and there are a number of points of view that are very useful in this. But I'm looking forward to an opportunity to think about it and for further discussion within the board as to how we might proceed based on what we've heard here tonight. So, no, I'm not formulating any final opinions at this time, but this is very useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Underhill?
Thank you. I too look forward to deliberating this with the board. I think some excellent points have been raised and some excellent questions have been asked today. I do think it's a unique opportunity for the town. You don't have that kind of acreage up for grabs on any given day, and there are plenty of options that could put that land to good use for the residents of Milis. But I do look forward to having further discussions with my colleagues next week.
Okay, thank you. Karen, any other emails that might have come in?
Not at this time. Looking to see if anyone else has a hand.
Okay, well then, the next steps, as we indicated several times, just to state them again, the board will, the select board will have a meeting on March 8th. This subject will be on that agenda for further conversation. That is a public meeting, and the public is invited to attend and also raise questions, make observations, state positions. This hearing is devoted entirely to this issue, and our meeting on next Monday will have other issues involved as well, but I just wanted to let folks, remind folks that when the board, the select board has these conversations, they are an open meeting, they are subject to our willingness and eagerness to receive input from the community. Certainly, if you have positions you'd like to state, you can also send them in via email, because we want to consider all of the options here, so to speak, and the input from the community is critical, because we're going to have to come up with an approach, and that approach will be something that will, whatever decision we make over the next three or four weeks will involve this community, and if the decision revolves, involves potentially moving forward with the exercising the option, then the community will be further involved in determining whether or not it would support that with an appropriation at town meeting. So, it's a bit of a, a bit of time, but it's not a lot of time, and hopefully, we will be able to fully air out all of the considerations and make sure that all of the community is brought into the conversation. Ultimately, whether it's through the ballot or through town meeting or both, it is up to the residents of this town as to whether or not they will ultimately decide to spend the money to purchase this property or not. So, this is something that you will, all the communities will continue to be engaged in as we move forward over the next several weeks.
Mr. Chair, I have one last one.
Yes.
And maybe it's more for the developer, but is the developer committed that this will only be an over 55 development?
Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
So, but that's from the point of view of what is the best use of the parcel from the point of view of the, the business interest of the developer as well as the interest of the community. Is that correct?
Yep, that's right. That's the genesis of this design. It really fits in beautifully in this area with not only the interest of the developer, but also to link with the interest of the town as well.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'm going to ask that we take a motion from the board to close the hearing, and after we have that motion, then we will actually vote, the second vote, to adjourn our meeting. So, is there a motion for the board to close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing.
I second it.
I moved and seconded that the hearing with respect to the 61A property on Village Street be adjourned. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
So, the hearing is now concluded, and there being no further business for this board, I would ask that a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I moved and seconded that the select board meeting of March 1st be adjourned. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
So, that concludes our meeting. I want to thank everyone for participating. The citizens who participated, our town council, and also representatives of the developer for sharing their input with us tonight. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.